So it is five. Okay, it's five o'clock. We're gonna get started here. Counselor McKinnon? Okay. Okay, we're live.
Okay. I would like to start off first by, we acknowledge that the land upon which we gather is traditional unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation called Order. And I just want to mention a couple of things, a couple of matters. On Saturday, council members and myself went to the semi-annual meeting of the Federation of Prince Edward Island Municipalities. Great meeting. I thank the deputy, Counselor Bernard, McAleer, Beck, and McCabe for showing up. I think we learned a lot on conflict of interest and EMO, which was very important in that discussion. I know we all can't make it, but it was a great meeting to be part of. And then, on the day before, on the Friday, the feds, the federal government through the Minister of ACOA, Jeanette Taylor-Pedapa, announced the $25 million investment from the federal government and the province, announced $25 million investment from the provincial government, $50 million to open a new bioexhilerator at the West Royal Industrial Park. I think it'll be about an 85,000-square-foot facility, but it's all about R and D, and this is a great injection for the city of Charlatown, the province of Prince Edward Island, and the Atlantic region. So I want to thank the Minister and our Premier for making this happen, and definitely Rory Francis, who has been pushing this bioexhilerator for some years. It's been great, a great announcement for all of us. Okay, any declarations of conflict of interest? Counselor Twill, do you have any declarations of conflict of interest before I go out? You're good? Okay. Anyone? Okay. Approval of the agenda? Okay. Counselor, go ahead.
You know, before we start our meeting, if the closed session number B could be moved to the front of the line. I've been getting a lot of calls from residents and inquiring, when are we gonna deal with this? And I said, well, I'll bring it up here tonight to see if we can get it right at the first and see what happens, if council could vote on that, and, you know, your thoughts.
Counselor Duran, that's in the closed session. You'll have to bring that up before we go into the closed session. That item, that's why we put it there, because it's still with legal. Any other issues with the agenda? Okay. Need a motion to approve, motion moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by Counselor McKinnon. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, 10-0. Okay, adoption of previous draft minutes. So we have the regular meeting of January 9th, 2023, special meetings January 30th, February 2nd, and February 6th, 2023. Need someone to move the adoption of those minutes? Moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Matarque. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Business arising out of the minutes, of those three, four sets of minutes. Okay. Seeing none. I'll move it to the first report, and I think, Madam Deputy Minister, this is probably the first time we haven't seen anything from planning. I'll let you take the floor.
Good evening, folks. Yeah, this is probably the first time we've not had any resolutions on the floor this evening for the Planning and Heritage Committee. But we did meet on February 6th, the Planning and Heritage Committee met. Minutes are in your package. The Planning Board, as we mentioned, we did not meet, but we did meet in February, but we met just earlier today, the Heritage Board. And those minutes will come in the March meeting, because we only just met a half an hour ago. The Design Review Board met on January 30th, and the minutes are in your package. The Affordable Housing Advisory Committee did not meet, and as I mentioned before, we have no resolutions for your consideration. But I will point out that we are in the process of proposing our public consultation process for the, to get the public input on the official plan. And those tentative dates are March 20th, 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. And we're going to be setting up in the various wards, kind of going two wards at a time, so that we can gain the public consultation and information, so hopefully we'll get lots of folks out there. And if you're not able to make it, we are planning to record each of the meetings, so that you're able to go back onto the website and review the thoughts and ideas that you're going to hear from those folks across Charlatown. Other than that, I don't have anything else, but I will do my best to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy. Okay. Counselor Twill?
I'd like to ask the manager a question, but I'll ask you, Chair. What I'd like to know tonight is, when a development is not harmonious with the existing fabric, and, you know, it could be single-family dwellings, apartments could be, or two, but when a development is truly not harmonious with a neighborhood, what role does the Planning Department play? And if the impact and effect of the development not being harmonious with a neighborhood, does the Planning Department recommend to Planning Board that this development is in fact not harmonious and should not proceed? There is a section of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, so I'm just looking for a direction, clarification, so that it is, it is more or less the checks and balances of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, that the residents that are being negatively impacted by a development that is truly not harmonious with the neighborhood do have that option to appeal to? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Twill. I think I will defer that to Alex Forbes, our manager, and he might be able to speak to that.
Your worship, that's a really hard question to answer. There's context on every project. I mean, without the context, there's all kinds of provisions, there's zoning by law requirements, there's official plan policies. So in, without some context in regard to the property, it's, you know, harmonious is a word that is in the zoning by law, but it's usually, if you're getting into any kind of a decision, dealing with that, it's supported one way or the other by a lot of other pieces in the zoning by law. So it's just not one word in isolation. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you.
But I think it's safe to say, as you pointed out, there is a section in the Zoning and Development Bylaw that the residents have the option to appeal to, that mechanism.
Yep.
That's in the, in the bylaw. And that it's not just a slam dunk that, well, you know, doesn't meet, or does meet the zoning criteria, therefore, council, council of the day has really no say. It's as of right, and the development must proceed whether or not it is truly harmonious with the neighborhood. But as you pointed out, Mr. Forbes, and I thank you, that you need more context, but nonetheless, I just wanted to bring that to the forefront, because we seem to, over the last, you know, few years, experiencing developments that are truly not harmonious with the develop, with the existing neighborhood, and yet, you know, they go ahead and, and residents are being told, affected residents are being told, well, there's, there's nothing we can do, and that's not true. There is something we can do, because there is a section in the Zoning and Development Bylaw that we can, that we can examine collectively as a council, as a planning board, and more importantly, as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, do you want to address that?
Just gonna thank Counselor Twill for his, for his comments, and that I would encourage he and most others to attend these upcoming public consultation sessions around the opening up of the official plan. It might be a great opportunity to get more clarity around that, Counselor Twill. Thank you.
And Counselor, Deputy Mayor Yankoff, just to close this, your meetings are always open for planning, heritage, and design review. So if those questions come up from counselors, they can bring them to the, to your committee, because I know you're willing to accept anyone to go to those meetings to express their views. Okay. Parks and Recreation, that the next one? Am I right? Okay. And Counselor Twill, Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, the report. Council did meet. We have, I believe, three resolutions, Donna? Oh, I thought there were three. Okay, I'm sorry. We have one for council's consideration. I'll wait till the resolution comes forward, and then I'll try to, as was just stated earlier, add a little context to the resolution. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Twill and seconded by Counselor Bernard, that the city of Charlatown agrees to reimburse CADC for expenses incurred relating to a change order for additional professional services from Phantom Design Services required for the design development of the Roundhouse Park development in the amount of $39,596 plus applicable taxes, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay.
Resolution, so you can just let me know when it's appropriate that I ask?
Deputy Mayor, we'll just deal with the resolution first, and you want to ask questions about the?
About the report.
Thank you. Okay. So do you want to speak to the resolution there, Counselor Twill?
Expenses for the conceptual design. I want council to know that once the design is completed, we'll be discussing it here collectively as a council, and then we will be going to a public meeting for the residents in the community and all interested constituents across the city would like to have an opportunity to look at the, look at the proposed plan. We will advertise, give plenty of notice, and I think I did talk to Mr. Quinn prior to the meeting. I think, Frank, we're looking at sometime spring for the public consultation, collaboration with, with the, with the community. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Twill, thank you very much. Counselor Beck?
I think Counselor Duran was ahead of me. Okay. Sorry, I'm just unaware of what this project, what the Roundhouse Park development actually is. Counselor Twill, could you just elaborate a little bit on that for me? Thank you.
It's further development as to what you see now. You know, it's a historic part of that green space down in front of Founder's Hall. That's, that's, that's where we're looking to, to do further, further, further development. There's a historic significance to that property from railway perspective. It's something that council's been looking at over the last two to three years, and without having, you know, all the details in front of me, we'll be giving that information to all members of council. Frank, if you'd like to elaborate further, please, please go ahead, but there's a lot of history with that particular property. And just to let you know, Counselor Beck, it was about four or five years ago that I put a resolution on the, on the floor for the city of Charlatown to acquire that property, because I felt quite strongly, as well as our staff in Parks and Recreation and the majority of city council, that that was a property that was too important for the city of Charlatown to have any type of development on with respect to, you know, commercial development of any, of any sort. That property is extremely valuable, and I think it was a good investment, and now we're able to pursue projects of this magnitude because it is in the ownership of the city of Charlatown. So Frank, if you'd like to give even more, more particulars and more significance to the project?
Your worship and counsel, I think you covered most of it, Counselor Twill, but yeah, I should have alluded that it was at the Founder's Hall green space. Anybody that was new wouldn't know what Roundhouse Park was referring to, so. But it is, there used to be, right where the location is, where the green space is, there was a turntable where the train used to turn. It's actually apparently still buried underneath there somewheres. So this Roundhouse Park idea came out of that idea that we'd like to make, you know, a sort of history of the location, the Roundhouse, the turntable, and whatnot. So we're moving forward on design forward, and then, of course, going to the public consultation.
Counselor Duran, did you want to? On his report? Okay, okay. The motion? Go ahead. No, no, no. On the report or on the?
On the report.
Okay, okay, good. Let's call the question? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, 10-0. Okay, now, let's get to the report. But Counselor Beck, Counselor Duran, I had, the deputy was first, and then Duran, and then Beck. Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Yankoff, just let me get to that.
Thank you, your worship. I'm just, I was reading through the report, and I was just a little perplexed at why we were offering the UPI Health and Wellness Center to have a free rental space, but then we were not allowing the PEI Cultural Association and Corella Association, they were only going to get 50%. And I noticed further down that, you know, you thought, well, we're gonna review this policy, but in the short term, I'm just wondering why, why some would get free and some would only get 50%. It seems rather unfair, but maybe, maybe there's more detail in this report that I'm missing. So, thank you.
Counselor Twill?
Thank you for the question. Good question. So I understand it. We did have discussion at the committee level. Staff felt quite strongly that the one for university was just a one-shot deal, whereas the other, the other request was over an extended period of time. It wasn't just for, you know, one, you know, one event. This, the other would extend over weeks, maybe for the whole year. So we were struggling at the committee level, and, and that's why, as you pointed out quite correctly, that the staff is going back and they're looking at revamping the policy. You know, we can certainly take this issue back to the committee and have further discussion to see, you know, if we can be creative to, to try to make sure there's an equal-level playing field, which I think we all strive for, but I think that's the rationale. But again, we, we had, we had a lot of discussion at, at the committee level, and that's, that's, committee went with the staff's recommendation. But if you'd like, we can, we can bring it back to the committee for further discussion, for further deliberations.
Deputy, is that your wish? Okay. Counselor Duran?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you, Counselor Twill, for your report. I'm just wondering about a status update of the, the outdoor rinks. Where are we at with that? I know we have one in Sherwood there, there's not much work to be done, and I realize the weather hasn't been great. Are we moving ahead with, with those, or mostly those, or where were we at?
Thank you. Thank you for your question, Counselor Duran. As you know, we do have a list. I think we have a list of 10, 10, 10 rinks. Our staff is working extremely hard. This year's weather has presented, you know, the climate that we're, that we've been experiencing over the last number of weeks has been very, very challenging for the Parks and Recreation staff that are working long hours, early mornings. You know, I'm sure they're, they're, they're very frustrated, because they take great pride in their work, and we'd like to see, have these rinks up and running, because it means a lot to the respective neighborhoods in the city of Charlatown. I know Counselor Matarque has questioned me as well with regards to the outdoor rink in, I think it's MacArthur Park, excuse me. So Frank, maybe, maybe over the next couple of days, maybe you can give a synopsis and send it out to all members of council as to where we're at with respect to the outdoor rinks and how much progress has been made. But I think, I think it's safe to say, Counselor Duran, that, you know, it's been very challenging because of the weather and what the weather has presented us with, and again, our staff are working as hard as they can, but, you know, soon as the rinks are flooded, then, then, then it gets really mild, and it just, it just destroys, you know, it just destroys whatever attempts that are being made. So I don't know if that's a good answer, but nonetheless, it's an attempt to try to address it. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Bernard, is that you up there? Go ahead.
I just want to touch on the request, your worship, at the meeting, and my recollection is that the request from UPI Health and Wellness is because they're putting out of their building during Canada games, so it was a two-week period. So committee agreed to forego that. The other one was for a year, and the council agreed to cut it 50% of what they were asking for, or 50% of the fees, to get some cost recovery for the facilities. So I don't know if there's any sense of bringing it back, we already hit the conversation, and I think something I think you want to stop is making decisions, going back to the committee, bringing it here the next month, going back to the committee again. I think this was, was talked about, this is the recommendation that was being made, I think you voted on it, because we're cutting it 50%, that's what they asked for. The other one for, for two weeks while Canada games is on. Anyway, thank you.
That's what I tried to allude to. I said, I said the resolution, you know, for the university was just for, you know, just one event, short period of time, like as you pointed out, two weeks. But I mean, we are gonna go back and we're gonna revisit the, the policy, and, and there might be other, there might be other options where we can help, help this group. You know, I'm certainly open to providing whatever assistance to our community groups across the city. I think that's, you know, these community groups are, play a very significant role in, you know, when it comes to volunteerism and, and bringing different dimensions and culture and, and understanding to our communities, you know, where we're always talking about diversity, inclusiveness, and all of these, these wonderful things, and I just think we need some more time to work on that policy, and I know staff is working on it. And that doesn't mean, Counselor Bernard, that we can't have a discussion at Parks and Rec. I know that, you know, we're trying to be all-inclusive here, and, and of course, we want to be fair. That's, again, that's what we strive for.
Equity, inclusion, inclusion, and diversity. Go ahead, there. Hold on, ready, Ed?
And, and, you know, and that's fine, and I think that's why we decided to go, and staff made a recommendation for the 50% cut in the regular fees. So, thank you.
Counselor Ramsey, you've been in there trying to get in the queue, so you're in there now, sir.
Your worship, thank you very much, Counselor Twill, for your report. The Queen Elizabeth Park, we have a trail down there. I talked to some of the staff, and I know how we do not have a whole lot of staff around seasonal or anything, but I've been getting an awful lot of emails and phone calls, how people like to use that trail around the park for walking, exercise, walking their dogs, everything, and that is still not being cleaned. It, like, it never was, so I'm just wondering, on behalf of all the residents that use that, from not only my ward, but other wards, Ward 7 and everything, they, they're really asking for it to have it cleaned, so they can go down there on a nice day to do their walking or whatever they want to do. Thank you. So I, I just wondered if you bring, if you would bring that back to your committee. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor?
Thank you for your question. When you say clean, are you talking about cleaning the snow and the ice off the, off the pathways?
Yes, I am, yeah.
Okay. I know we've had these discussions previously in Parks and Recreation, and I think that's something we'd like to see across the city. I know staff has also said that it presents a challenge in terms of equipment, being able to plow these pathways. Ideally, I'm strongly in favor of that, so that, you know, people get into their routines and their, you know, their daily exercises, whether it's walking, running, jogging, and passive or active. I, I think it's a great part of, you know, the quality of life that we're trying to present to our, our constituents. I know Mr. Quinn is making notes. We will discuss further, see what the impact and effect is on our, on our staff. You know, if we say we're gonna commit, then we've got to, we've got to be able to commit so that there's consistency, predictability, and, and something that, you know, residents can look forward to. So I think that speaks to a broader discussion, and that'll be on our agenda for the next Parks and Recreation meeting.
Thank you, Counselor Twill. Counselor Beck?
Thank you for that, Counselor Twill and your worship. I, I guess I just have one kind of comment, first off. I noticed in a lot of the reports that there's abbreviations of titles, but there's no reference as to what those titles are. So I think if we're working with, I'm sitting there, and I don't know what PRLA is, I don't know what AS is, I don't know what PRM is, so maybe if we could. I know, I, I got that, I appreciate that, brevity and stuff like that, and I know we live in a world of acronyms, but it would be nice if we could have some illumination, since we're in the illumination spirit of Canada games here, maybe we can have some illumination on that.
Maybe some definitions.
Some definitions, yeah. The one, one thing I'm wondering, Counselor Twill, if, I know we talked about, we've had discussions about the active transportation piece between Terry Fox Drive and Brighton Road. I know there's been some discussions about that, and I thought that was being discussed here, but I didn't see any reference to that here. Can maybe you can provide an update in terms of what that is looking like on that piece? I know there's various stages and various ideas, but maybe if we can talk a little bit about what that next type might look like for the, I guess, annexation or active transportation between Terry Fox and the end of Ambrose Street, Brighton Road area?
Counselor Twill, thanks.
Yes, and you didn't see it in the report, because it's a capital project. It's a capital project, and, and, you know, we haven't presented our capital projects. We have presented it to the Finance Committee. There's further discussions and... to the Finance Committee. There's further discussions and further discussions and deliberations that have to take place, and that's, that's why it's not here. Plus, there's other options too, that, as you know, that I personally am pursuing with respect to active transportation, Terry Fox Drive, right down Old Brighton Road. So, we're going to have those discussions, Counselor Beck, and believe me, your message is, your message is loud and clear and duly noted.
Yes.
And has been noted.
Yes. Thank you for that. Okay. Well, thank you, Counselor Twill. Okay, we can move on to the next one. Water and wastewater, and that's Counselor Dron. Hold on, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. The Water and Sewer Utility Committee met on January the 12th, and information from that meeting is in your packages. We do not have any resolutions for your consideration today. Mainly in the committee meeting, we talked about our upcoming budget discussions and how we're trying to keep everything under control. So, if anybody has any questions, I'll try to answer them as best I can. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Dron, thank you. Okay, Counselor Bernard.
Counselor Dron, I'm just wondering, in the binder, it talks about the draft capital budget, and it lists like seventeen, twenty-four projects. Are some of them already done? Or are these, are these a list of new projects that the county man is saying we need to do?
Counselor Dron.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Bernard. Some of these are finished. We just have a little bit unleft on something like Pond Street or Garfield Street. But the rest of them are in the capital for this year, but we still owe a bit from last year. So, we just have a little bit left to do on a couple of those, same as the St. Peter's Belvedere Roundabout. You know, so probably, I'd say thirty or forty percent, might have a few little things we have to tidy up, but the rest are for the, for the upcoming draft budget.
So, I guess what I'm wondering is, so something like the St. Peter's Belvedere Roundabout, that would already be budget, so that's just transferring to the next year?
It's carryover.
Pardon?
Richard, is it a carryover?
Yeah.
So, I'm wondering, so what are the actual, so just the ones halfway down the page down is what's considered the new projects you're considering doing?
No.
If the Chair wants to pass the baton, Counselor, just, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I could pass the baton since he's here. I did say we still have small amounts owing on some of these projects, and they're carryovers, like the mayor said. We'll need to tidy them up this year, but feel free to add on that, Mr. McEwen. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dron. Mr. McEwen.
Yeah, so the details of the draft budget will come forward to council at a later date, but you're right, the majority of those projects listed have carryovers in them, like holdbacks or smaller landscaping to be completed.
Okay. No resolutions, Counselor Dron?
No.
Okay, let's move on. Okay, Counselor McCabe.
Thank you, your worship.
Chief Engineer here, okay, there he is.
He's there.
Chief Engineer.
So, our Public Works Committee met on January 11th, and again, on January 25th, with the draft minutes included in your regular package. The Civic Board for Persons with Disabilities have not met since the last monthly meeting of council. We do have a number of resolutions this evening, but before we get to that, I just want to give a brief shout-out to Riley, Scott, and Albert, our engineers, who did a great job hosting a open house to invite residents of Charlottetown to come in and have a look at the proposed master plan for University Avenue. And I also want to thank the residents of Charlottetown who took the time to come in and provide feedback and, you know, share their ideas on how we could look to make this a really good project for everyone. There were questions, our RFPs going out tonight, you know, about how they would have been able to take that information and compile the information, but the RFP going out tonight is just to get that process started. There's still going to be a lot of work so that all that feedback will be able to be compiled and put into place before there's actual projection on the project. So, again, you know, our public meetings for Public Works are a little different than our public meetings for planning, but I'm really thinking it's, the more we can do those, the more we can get input from our residents, then, then the better we're going to be in the end. So, thank you again, and if you guys have any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Counselor Ramsey.
Thank you for that, Counselor McCabe. Just wondering, I sent you a note, and the manager also, about Waterview Crosswalk Intersection off of North Road, and I'm just wondering if you've had a chance to discuss that, or is that for further date? Thank you.
Yep, Counselor Ramsey, right now, the manager, and you can jump in, Scott, if I don't answer this fully, is in note of trying to develop some sort of a criteria where the new lights that are proposed in our capital budget for purchase will be placed. So, right now, I think we're still working on criteria, and once that's established, we'll be sure to share that with everybody on council so that we can understand how they come to the conclusion where these lights can be placed.
Okay. Counselor Matar.
No, I'm.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor McCabe. My question, at the last session, I asked about an update on the Belvedere Roundabout. I'm just wondering where we are with that. I know there was some supply chain issues, just if we could get an update as to where we are with the lighting, if at the very least, the lighting that is required, because there are a number of kids, I travel there every day, as I mentioned before, there's a number of kids from various schools that are coming there and crossing. So, I know that we're challenged with that, but if we can get an update as to when that might be coming in and being implemented, that'd be great. Thank you.
Counselor McCabe.
I'm going to have to deter that because, to Scott, because I haven't received the update yet either, so maybe, Scott, you could share that.
Chief Engineer.
So, your worship, so the poles landed in Moncton last week. There's a few of them that have to get painted before they arrive, so we expect to see the poles start landing here sometime this week, and hopefully, everything goes well and can start seeing some installations sometime next week.
Okay. Counselor Matar.
Thank you very much.
And Counselor Ramsey, I had cut you off. Did you want to just finish off your question? Sorry about that, sir.
Well, just like home, your worship, I always get cut off. But, no, I'm just wondering, once we find out about the crosswalk and everything, it's a safety issue and everything, so I can have an answer for the residents that have been after this for eight years, and I just want to get an answer and who I can refer to, because I'm not an engineer, so ASAP, I guess. Thank you.
Counselor McCabe.
Thank you for your, yes, and I think that that will be fair, and I know that there is issues, there are concerns there. So, whether it sees flashing lights, if, you know, if they meet the criteria, wonderful. If they don't meet the criteria that's established, I think, I think that we still have to look at addressing the concern at that crosswalk. So, I know the manager's aware, and we will be sure to get back to you as soon as that criteria is developed.
Deputy Mayor Yankoff.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Counselor McCabe, for the update on the university master plan. It was a question that I had, and I appreciate knowing that the public's time is going to be certainly looked at as we move forward on that plan, so I thank you for that. The other thing I'm wondering about, and I see that the manager of Public Works is the Chair of that committee, I'm wondering where we're at with that Parking Strategy Forgiveness Program, and the only reason I choose to bring it up in your committee is I see that Scott is the Chair of that committee, and there just seems to be a lot of questions, and, and just if you have an update on that, thank you.
Counselor McCabe.
The fast answer to that question would be no. We haven't discussed that at our committee at all at Public Works. So, you know, again, that's one of those, those issues that seem to lie in economic development, it lies in Public Works, it lies in policing, and I think really our first step would be determine where that is going to fall, and that report vent through that proper committee. But as far as Public Works, we haven't been updated or briefed on anything on the parking initiative.
Clarify, I think Deputy Mary Hancop is asking, he's the Chair of the Park and Strive, that's what you're asking? Can you defer to him?
I can defer to him because it's not, it's never come through Public Works ever, so.
Your worship, so at this time, there isn't an update. We were waiting for a consultant, there's an individual who's done a number of these reports. We were waiting for information from him in regards to the best way to proceed forward. It is quite a large undertaking, and to do it with internal resources, it might be quite challenging. So, I believe that report just came in, but I haven't had a chance to look at it. So, hopefully, at the next committee meeting, the goal would be to update my committee through that. So, we're going to start making some progress here shortly, but it's been on hold for some time.
Thank you, and just as a follow-up on that, maybe, maybe just for clarity, going forward, let council know which committee it falls under so that I'm not asking the wrong committee. Apologize for that. Thank you.
Slow down, buddy. Okay, Counselor Twill, you got a question there?
Thank you. One of the issues I've raised on a number of occasions is Spring Park Road. So, for the vehicle traffic that comes off Spring Park Road, 500 yards in, you'll see a sign which says reduce the speed to 30 kilometers because we have St. Jean's Elementary School. As you're proceeding up Spring Park Road and you pass by St. Jean's Elementary School, short while after, you know, the signage there to increase your speed to 40 kilometers. Then you come to a very challenging intersection, Highland, Desperse, Douglas, and continuation of Spring Park Road further up. As you pass that challenging intersection, you come to another intersection that's very challenging, and according to the residents, dangerous because of challenges in that intersection, McGill, Spring Park Road, traffic sometimes run-throughs, carries through the stop signs, running the stop signs, not stopping, but nonetheless, it's not a real clear, clear-cut intersection. There are challenges with that. So, you're back up to 40 kilometers, then there's other signage that says, no, you better slow down again, because now you're coming up to Colonel Gray High School. And, you know, I think it's 30 kilometers right up to Kirkwood Drive. So, with the two schools, we've got an elementary school, we've got a senior high school, we've got two challenging intersections. I think, I think Spring Park Road needs to be looked at, looked at in its entirety. And I'd like to suggest that maybe we can engage with a traffic engineer to look at Spring Park Road. Personally, I'd like to see the entire road at 30 kilometers as opposed to 40, because, you know, you just can't increase the speed, slow down the speed, increase the speed, slow down, slow down, slow down. And we've got a lot of students, you know, from St. Jean's School, we have a heavy concentration of seniors, Devera Court, Queens Court, that are commuting up and down Spring Park Road, and there's many, many challenges. And I think we need to take a very serious look at Spring Park Road when you come off Houston, or if you come off Kirkwood Drive
Yeah.
and you're driving down.
Thank you.
So, please take that under consideration. I'd like to, I'd like the department to enlist with, you know, a traffic engineer, and let's look at that. And, and, you know, I think one of the things we have to look at is the speed limit.
Okay.
And how we can, and furthermore, how we can make it safe for the pedestrian traffic that are not only walking up down Spring Park Road, but are crossing Spring Park Road, whether it be McGill, Desperse, Highland.
Yeah, and, yeah, and Green, Green Street.
Everything okay there, or what?
Yeah, no, my back's sore, yeah. Just wait and get up first, Bondi, before I forget.
Counselor McCabe, can you answer that, please?
So, yeah, Counselor Twill, and I agree, you brought this up at our committee level, and I know that we've already given direction to the manager to look into this. You're absolutely right. I work at the, one of the big high schools there where we have to look at that, so I'm hoping that we'll have an update at our next, at our next committee level for sure. Thank you.
So, Counselor McCabe, can we go to the resolutions? You want to?
There's more questions.
No? Are you all right?
I'm going.
Okay, good, good.
Moved by Counselor.
You want a glass of water?
Thank you.
Moved by Counselor McCabe and seconded by Counselor McAlire, that as per the conditions of the public request for quotations for City Hall Foundation repairs, the submission of McLean Construction, APM McLean, in the amount of $88,400 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. You got a question out there, Counselor Twill? Go right ahead.
Thank you. This is for repairs to the foundation here at City Hall. Scott, I don't know if you had the figure at the top of your head, but I think what I'd like to know over the last number of years, how much money has been spent on renovating and repairs Charlottetown City Hall? It just seems like we're doing these renovations, or we're doing these repairs, maintenance, you know, it just seems to go on and on and on. And I have to question the longevity of, you know, City Hall in terms of, you know, the structure, the functionality of it, and, you know, where we're going to be in the next few years. I mean, we're just spending money, we're spending thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars on Charlottetown City Hall, and, you know, when, when do we come to determination as to what we should look at in terms of whether or not we should be looking at alternatives? I mean, this is a historic building, but it just, it just seems to go on and on and on. We've spent a lot of money, I mean, millions and millions of dollars on renovations and repairs here to City Hall. I'd like, I'd like to, I know, I know.
I know.
This is part, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, you're up to two minutes. Let's
Pardon me?
just wrap it up there because you're up to two minutes.
I still got another.
No, that's, that's for five minutes. Just finish up.
Anyway, I'd like to get a figure, so as to, you know, as to where we're at and how much money has been spent in recent years.
And that, again, that question has to go through the Chair. Do you want, you can't --
Are you running through the Chair?
Chair. Can we defer to the, to the manager?
[laughing]
Yes, short answer?
Yes, I'm sure the manager's going to have to compile that information and get back to him, but I won't speak for him.
Yeah, it's a 135-year-old building, so it takes a lot of money to keep, keep it up there.
Your worship, that's correct. We'll have to look into that, that number, and we can provide that at a later date.
Okay. Resolution? Questions called.
You write it out, ready?
That was Resolution One, we still have to.
Yeah, we have six resolutions. Moved by Counselor McCabe.
No, 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 I have to vote on the first one.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay, all those in favor of the first resolution, please raise your hand. Ten, zero. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor McCabe and seconded by Counselor McAlire, that as per the conditions of the public request for proposals for Engineering Services One, Roadwork Design, University Avenue Phase One Construction, and Spencer Drive Extension, the submission of EXP Services, Inc., in the amount of $156,500 plus all applicable taxes be accepted. And that is per the conditions of the public request for proposals for Engineering Services One, Roadway Design, Mallpack Road Upgrades, the submission of Harborside Engineering Group in the amount of $39,295 plus all applicable taxes be accepted. And further, that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Do you want to speak to it? Oh, Counselor Beck, and then Counselor Twill. Counselor Beck.
Thank you, your worship. Maybe I'll bypass you this time, Madam Chair, and I'll go straight to Scott Adams, if that's okay.
Is that okay? Can you, okay, ask the question. Thank you.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, maybe you could tell me how we interpret the financial scores and the technical scores on the package?
Yeah.
Or maybe not.
You're funny.
Counselor McCabe, do you want to answer that question?
No, I'm not on the tendering evaluator, so Scott, if you could respond to Counselor Beck, that would be wonderful.
Thank you.
Just a question.
Options to be fined, Scott.
Your worship, so how we do, there's a, as is a request for proposal in the document, we stipulate how we're going to evaluate both the, the proposal portion and then the financial portion. So, the proposal portion, it's laid out in terms of how we score it within the document. There's certain points for, you know, having their experience on these projects, their understanding of the project, the resources that they expect to use, things like that. And it's, I should go back a little bit. It is a two-envelope system. So, essentially, what it does is the first envelope is solely the specifications. So, they submit everything in writing how they're going to do it. The second envelope is price. So, then we, once we score everything based on the specifics, we look at the price and make it, and then how the prices, on these ones, I believe it was 70/30, so 70% was based on the written portion, 30% was given to their price. And so, for the price, it's just a mathematical formula to, the lowest price gets 30. And so for the price, it's just a mathematical formula to, the lowest price gets 30, 30 points, and then it's based off, they go, they lose a point for every, so many percentage away from that low bid, essentially how it works.
Thank you.
You had a question to put on your mic.
With regards to the request for proposal, item three, Spencer Drive Extension, Mount Edward Road, Spencer Drive. I can recall at the Public Works Committee that there was a lot of discussion surrounding that. I did request, see if we could look at options as opposed to, you know, lining up Spencer Drive with Mount Edward Road because that would flow into Ash Drive. That was one of the discussions that we had, and we had a lot of discussions about it. And we know from the public, public consultation process, the meeting that we had at the Confederation Center on, on a traffic study for West Royalty, which impacts heavily on Sherwood, we know that the residents on Ash Drive are adamantly opposed to an intersection lining up where the traffic would continue on up into Ash Drive, which would impact a park, Mulberry Park, to be exact. And lifelong residents, I've talked to these residents over the years, they're, they're not in favor of increased traffic in any which way, shape, or form to continue on from, you know, newly proposed road on Spencer Drive to Mount Edward Road and then continue on onto Ash Drive. This is no different than Angus Drive for that matter. So I'm not sure why this, this request for proposals here because I do not recall at the committee level that there was clear direction given to pursue this as to the way it's illustrated in this resolution.
Okay.
I'm surprised with that revelation.
Counsel McCabe, you going to answer that?
I'm going to try. So I, just for clarification, at committee level, I think we had discussion around lots of different things, whether this year would be the year that we'd be able to do any real work anyway. There is going to be quite a bit of work required. I think this resolution is to go out for specific design work again, looking at some of the stuff. And for clarity, at committee level, we also talked about the concern that Ash Drive residents had for sure. And what was indicated was that there would be no opportunity to come off Spencer Drive to go direct onto Ash Drive. It would be a write-in only on Ash Drive from Mount Edward Road. Ash Drive residents won't be impacted. They'll have the ability to turn left, to turn right when they're coming off Ash Drive, but there will be no direct access from Spencer Drive onto Ash Drive. And that was going to be communicated to the residents of the area as we get closer to kind of finalizing where we were going or ready to move on these plans, from my understanding. And Scott, if I've missed something, you can clarify.
Counsel Dron.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you for that explanation, Counsel McCabe. The question I have is, is we have a lot of design work coming out. So if we're not going ahead with the projects, you know, we haven't decided that yet. So do these projects, the design work, can they be, you know, catalogued and waited for another year or, or two or whatever until the budget allows us to go forward? Scott shaking his head there. So I just know that other projects that we have gone out to design work and we haven't completed them, and now we got to go find them again. So I'm just concerned, like, how long do we hold on to these for that design work? Thank you.
Interesting that you asked that. I had that exact note in my binder this morning and did call Scott around that same question was, you know, with capital budget stuff, when we're not sure if this is going to be a priority and things can change, why are we going out to spend money on design when we're not ready to proceed with the project? And Scott, you might want to share your clarification rather than me use your words.
Chief Engineer.
Your worship, so as Counsel Dron alluded to, yes, so we're trying to get to a point where we're ahead on design projects. The challenge always has been is getting designs out the door and getting everything awarded within time to get it constructed in this particular year. And also, it's, there, some of these projects are quite a number of pieces. We want to be able to have some figures behind a design so that in future years, we don't do it. This year, we have some numbers, budget numbers for future years so we can discuss it at the council level. So yes, the, if a project's not approved, it will sit on a shelf. We essentially get it to what we call about 95% complete, and that includes specifications and all that stuff. When we're ready to actually move on it and get, get money in the budget, we work with that consultant, we review, make sure we're still current design standards, adjust the budget for inflation of that year, and then bring all that forward for consideration and in tendering if we, if we get the budget. So, and this, this work doesn't go to waste. It's, it's nice to have these projects ready to go for future years as well.
Counsel Dron, is that okay? And correct me if I'm wrong, Counsel Dron, you represent the area, right?
No, I'm across the street, but technically it'll be coming across Mount Edward.
Right, but you represent Ash Drive?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Council Twill, you got two minutes because this is your second time up.
So, again, you're going to go ahead with the, you know, the design work for the extension. And you said quite clearly, Chair McCabe, that, that the traffic will not proceed onto Ash Drive. That's a guarantee from what I'm picking up here tonight, that there's no way, God's green earth, that the traffic is going to proceed across Mount Edward Road onto Ash Drive. That's a guarantee, right? Okay. So having said that, when that design work is done, can we at least, out of respect for the people that live in Ash Drive, can we not go to the consultation process and show them the, show them that the, show them the design, the conceptual design, and illustrate quite clearly that a guarantee, the traffic's not going to proceed onto Ash Drive? I'm looking forward to that.
Good idea. Good idea. I just have one question, Counsel McCabe. If you look at the project one, EXP Services, Harborside, WSP, 9090, EXP Harborside, Harborside, which is in the capital region, they were 66 and EXP was 102. Can I ask the engineer if I can get a clarification on that?
Yep.
Is that a yea or nay?
Oh, yes. Of course.
Thank you.
Do whatever you want. You're the boss.
Your worship, I, I'm glad you brought this up. So we, again, basically, you see the first column is called Technical Store, so that's our team going through and scoring both or all the proposals based on the scoring system. And then we had a financial score. And when we got into the financial score, if you look at the price difference, it's 50, 50%. We, we talked about this a lot internally. And one of the issues that we were a little concerned about, Harborside had estimated that it would take half the effort that both the other two engineering firms thought this project would. And that's a bit alarming, that much less effort to do such a big project was a bit concerning. I think it was something like two, I think EXP had something like 200 hours, WSP had something just over 200 hours, and then Harborside only had 100 hours. We, again, because the scoring was tied, we recommend EXP because we're very concerned that it's not going to be able to be done for $66,000. It's, it's, there's something that's going to, we're a bit concerned that something is going to come about this that they're missing in their proposal.
So, Madam Chair, just to you again, EXP is doing the design for the first phase. First phase takes it from corner of Belvedere University to University of NASA? Is that correct? Okay.
Question's called, sir.
Question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those against? 9-1, Counsel Dron against.
Moved by Counsel McCabe and seconded by Counsel McAlire. That is per the conditions of the public request for proposals for Engineering Services II, Street Rehabilitation, the submission of EXP Services, Inc., in the amount of $84,946 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CIO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel Mert and then Counsel Ramsey.
Thank you, your worship.
Go ahead, sir.
Counsel McCabe, just for a point of clarification, can you explain to me the term a complete street rehabilitation and what that means regarding Exhibition Drive and Seville Boulevard?
Counsel McCabe.
I'm going to think I'm really smart answering these questions, and you're going to be able to tell me if I'm actually learning or I still need some work.
You're doing a great job.
So a complete street rehabilitation is they're going to take up all the pavement, they're going to replace all the shale and stuff underneath the roadways. It's going to be a complete, it's not just going over it and surfacing it. They're actually tearing up these roads and they're really going to go in and, and do the full work that's required to bring it up to standard.
Is that acceptable?
And water and sewer are also a partner in the project, so they'll work on the infrastructure underground that's required to get that up to standard as well.
So would that also include any infrastructure like sidewalks, curbs? I know on Exhibition Drive, there is no sidewalks currently there right now. There is a medium in the middle of the road between the track and the little mini mall there, a strip mall. Would it include things of that nature or is it specific to pavement, water, and sewer? Like, would it be lighting? Is this a complete opportunity to really vitalize that area, I guess would be my question?
Assistant Engineer McCabe.
I know. I think.
Not trying to test you here.
P. Engine Structure Engineer.
And that answer, I'm going to have to deter. He's nodding his head. I didn't know that it was going to include the neighborhood redesign, but if it does, that's wonderful.
Your worship, so this would be similar to what we've done on Pond Street or on Garfield. It's installing curb and gutter, sidewalks as well. We know we have a lot of issues, especially around Old Home Week. There's no sidewalk around that area, and individuals are all over the road. We have to close down part of the road for them. So yes, it does include sidewalks as well. We're trying to redefine the road and make it look like an actual road so you know where the road ends and the driveways all begin. Like I say, it will look similar to Garfield Street at the end of days, the end goal.
Just to finalize on that, would, would that also potentially infringe upon Kensington Road or is it limited to Exhibition Drive or at this stage?
Your worship, for this phase of the project, it is just solely exhibition from Kensington down to Riverside Drive. Sometimes we have to go a little further if we have to connect the water line or, you know, wherever the storm sewer connection has to be made, but primarily focused on Exhibition Drive.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Counsel Ramsey.
Thank you for that, McCabe. I'm very pleased to see Seville on that because that was ready to go last year and it was pushed back. And what about the medium going up the middle? Is that going to be removed or, if not, is the people, are the residents in that area, some got their flowers almost right up to the street? As Scott understands that too, because we're looking at it, like, we own so much in, so I'm just wondering if they're going to be advised that, you know, if you're planting your flowers, don't go right to the street this time because I know there's three homes up there for sure like that. And I'm wondering about the medium up the middle. Thank you.
Counsel McCabe.
So that's more operational. I'm going to defer to the manager. Thank you.
Your worship, until we start getting to the more detailed design, doing a survey, seeing what grades we have and all that, we can't make that judgment right now. At the end of the day, the center median we're going to try to keep, that's our goal. There's trees already well-established in there, and it does define the street. And so we don't want to impact the, that type of infrastructure that's already been there. And I'm sure, quite sure, the homeowners appreciate it that way. So our goal is not to go in and make it and take that away. We want to enhance the street and make it better and add sidewalks and things like that. So as of right now, it does not seem like the Boulevard will be going away. If anything, we'll have to go in the grassed area a bit to widen things out as we go. But we won't know those extents until we start doing the survey work.
Okay, thank you. Counsel? Good, okay. Questions called? Okay.
We have a question.
We're not, we're in resolution number three. We're voting on resolution number three. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. 10-0. Okay. Next one, Donna, or CIO?
Moved by Counsel McCabe and seconded by Counsel McAlire. That is per the conditions of the public request for proposals for Engineering Services III, Sidewalks and Multi-Use Paved Pathways, the submission of EXP Services, Inc., in the amount of $63,887 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CIO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel Twill.
Thank you. Scott?
Go to the chair.
To the chair, sorry. Sorry.
Counsel McCabe.
I don't see Towers Road here. I do recall at our meeting, when I just said the design work was already completed, there was design work back in 2019. That was the design work that I showcased at a community meeting. Subsequently, residents did have an opportunity to look at that design work. I think you indicated that, that that design work was not complete and that there was more work to be done. I'm looking for a clarification on that with respect to the proposed active transportation pathway.
Counsel McCabe.
So I feel like I'm playing chess. I got out ahead of you because I knew that question was going to come tonight, and I already spoke to the manager on that. And the design work is actually done. And the nice thing, what we just finished talking about, why we go out sometimes ahead for design, is that now we're ready to roll with your Towers Road, and we have the work already done, ready to go, and we don't have to go back out for design. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That is correct, isn't it, Chair?
Your worship, so again, like I mentioned to Counsel Dron earlier, it's about like a 75% complete. So a lot of survey work, the alignment, things like that have already been decided or just drawn up and such, as you saw during that plan. So now it's just finalizing all those plans and finalizing specifications.
And I believe CBCL did the work.
That, that's correct. So essentially, we have already reached out to them, like we've done with other projects that have already been started previous years. We reach out, ask for a quote to finalize or update that, update those drawings, and then if we have to come back to council, we'll bring, come back to council.
At the meeting in 2019, Counsel Twill had the drawings up on the wall. So it was the same drawings there, Counsel Twill. Okay, let's move on. What's the point you want to make?
At the Public Works Committee, Julie, I guess I have to ask a question through you to get, in order to get to Scott. I did ask if we could look at improvising, right and left-hand turns onto Mount Edward Road. That was one of the issues that did come up at that community meeting and subsequently at the.
No, Counsel Twill, this is about the pathways.
Yeah, I know, I know.
No, that's, that's an engineering issue that has to come up. You can bring that up at the next committee meeting.
They bring it up at the committee.
Yeah, well, we're talking about the pathways.
Right.
Can we get back on the pathways? Have a seat there. Thanks. Okay, questions on the floor? How many in favor? Please raise your hand. Okay, 10-0. Unanimous.
Moved by Counsel McCabe, seconded by Counsel McAlire. That is per the conditions of the public request for quotations for the supply and delivery of a new GNS system, the submission of council survey equipment limited in the amount of $30,185 plus all applicable taxes be accepted. This price includes the supply and delivery of a Trimble R12I GNSS system, a Trimble TSC7 controller, provisional extended warranty, and annual technical support, and that the mayor and CIO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay, question is called. All those in favor, please put up your hand. Oh, this is great. 10-0. CIO?
Moved by Counsel McCabe and seconded by Counsel McAlire. That is per the conditions of the public request for quotations for Radar Speed Display Signs, the submission of absolute traffic and Sign Solutions in the amount of $66,632.60 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CIO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay, questions on the floor. Counsel Beck? Oh, Counsel Beck's got a question. Counsel Twill. Counsel Beck?
Thank you, your worship. I heard a lot of discussion about these radar signs during the election. And I know it's been mentioned that they are, I forget the wording, there was in there somewhere, they've been proven to be effective in reducing, or improving safety overall, I guess. The, I just have a question about the monitoring of the effectiveness. How are we, some of the questions seem to be, how effective are they? And I didn't really have an answer for them, and they were wondering about them. So it's talking about it just installing these devices in the summer of 2019.
about it just installing these devices in the summer of 2023 and then monitoring the effectiveness over time, how do we, how do we gauge the effectiveness of them and how are we monitoring that over the course of time to know whether they are making a difference of it or not, so if you could address that, that'd be great.
Counsel McCain.
And Scott, again, I'm just going to try and you can jump in for sure, but I know that with these signs, Counselor Beck, different from our typical radar speed signs that are on all the time for cars, these are programmed, there's been data, there's been studies in Frederickton and New Brunswick, for example, where these are programmed, at the start of the school year, they kind of match our, our calendar at the school level, and so they know when there's school days, when there's not school days, so these, these radars will trigger based on when we're in school, when we're not in school, so it's not something that's going all the time where people become complacent to the trigger sign, it's more geared towards what our school day would look like, and in that, it's proven, and Scott, you may be able to talk about the data more, that it's more effective over time, because it's not something that's on all the time, it's just triggering when you're in school.
Great, Counsel McCain, thank you for that, once we get the data, I guess what do we, what, what happens with it then, Scott? Maybe if that's, yeah, sorry.
Your worship, so I guess the first part is the collection of data, so there's two ways we'll be collecting data, A, the speed display signs, they collect data 24/7, even if they're displaying a speed or not, so that's one way we collect it, the other way we'll collect it as well, is what we'll do, is we have data collectors that stick on a pole, you'll never see that, no one knows that they're there, they're pretty, they're no bigger than my little laptop here, and they can collect, they collect volumes of traffic, the speed that that traffic's going at, and they classify it as well, whether it's a truck or a car, and based on that, we will be able to monitor the effectiveness of these being on for school zone at times, again, the research says that over, the one report I'm very familiar with is, I believe, over a six-year period, even in year six, they're finding them still to be 76 or 77% effective, which is very high for, for a speed device, for reducing speeds in school zone, where you find, you know, there are typical speed displays, they're very effective, you know, Manta Road's a prime example, it's effective for the first three or four months, then people start to ignore it and it speeds going right back up, and it's been studied time and time again, those ones you have to move around to really try to get some type of effectiveness out of them, or long-term effectiveness out of them, people just get so comfortable and start ignoring signs, just like everyone ignores speed signs or anything like that, they're not as, long-term, they're not as effective as what research is finding for these being used for school zones specific.
Okay, good, Counsel Beck, good, okay, Counsel Twill.
Thank you, just want to get back to the, the data that's collected and the analytics, so when you collect that information, does it give the actual time that these vehicles are, like it could be nine o'clock in the evening, and in that picture, it says 30 kilometers, so I don't know if, you know, the vehicle traffic, let's say is going 40 kilometers in a 30-kilometer zone, you know, you often hear, you know, conventional wisdom says, well, it's only 10 kilometers over, it's not really that big of a deal, but I think the thing to keep in mind, Counsel McCain talked about, well, signage is only on when school is in session, well, school is always in session, for example, there's, there's activities taking place on, on the playgrounds, there's activities taking place in the school in the evenings, there could be, you know, utilization of the gymnasiums, kids in the, in the community could be, you know, there, playing a variety of sports, there could be, you know, art classes taking place, plays taking place, you know, bands could be practicing, so I, I would suggest that school is not just from, you know, nine to three o'clock or 3:30, schools are always in session and that, you know, they're, they're pretty active during the evenings as well, so please keep that in mind when you're collecting the analytics and the data and all that information, so it's not just during, you know, from nine, nine to three or nine to 3:30, the buses are there at the elementary school, Prince Street School, for example, at 2:30 on Waltham Drive, so schools are always in session, and the kids are always in the playgrounds, so I think that's important when we're, when we're collecting the data and the analytics.
Good, and Chief Engineer Scott, the, the data's being collected all the time, it's, it's, I know Peter Ruckevini had requested data, he made a $5, $10 payment, he collected data over a month for 24 hours per day, correct?
That's correct, these will collect the data in store for so long, so we have to go around and collect it or download it, but that's just part of our practice that we will be doing, to download that data and collect it throughout the school year for sure.
It's a great, great resource, Counsel Retard.
Thank you, just a quick question regarding, we look like we went to RFQ for 20 units, Counselor McCain, was it already predetermined a strategy around how they would be displaced around school zones, the reason I ask is, you Sherwood School as an example, there's four entry points that could lead to Sherwood School, of various runways, if you will, there's some longevity to get there, where someone like Parkdale School, there's really only one on each side, so my question then really is, is 20 enough, and again, I'll just, maybe the study's already been done, so I'll defer that to Scott, Scott?
Okay, so this is just phase one, we're just working within our current budget that we had a lot for this project, so the, with the, I believe it was a $100,000 budget, we had budgeted for the current capital budget that we're under, this is what we're able to do, including the polls and, and the bases and all that, so we'll, we'll make another request for additional funds for the upcoming capital budget, if that gets approved, we'll expand it, my, my goal is to see every school zone, this be at every beginning of every school zone, because every school is important, and we want to see traffic slowing down around schools, so that would be the long-term goal, that will be phased in over two or three years.
Thank you, so just by virtue of the 20 units we'll save for this year, will you be working with potentially police services in regard to some of those high-traffic areas where there already is areas of concern and less more, less than others, would be safe to say?
Your worship, yes, that's correct, we, we have looked at like Burchell, or Birchwood, sorry, for one is one that we have concerns about, there is a, a bit of an accident with the crossing guard this year there, so we're aware of these things, and so that has been marked as a priority school, so that one will be one of the first ones we do this year, and so, yes, so we're looking at any, right now, the schools that are on major collector routes would be the first, will be the first go-around, and then we'll, then get to the other streets, or the other schools as we, as the budget allows.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel McAlire.
Yeah, just wondering, on the school, on the number of school zones, is there, Counsel McCain, maybe your question for Scott, I'm not sure, just number of school zones in the city approximately?
Fifteen.
Well, I work for the schools board, but I have no idea exact number of how many schools, but he should, because he led the school board. There's a, there's a lot, and I'm sure you're looking at probably starting with more of the, like, I would be guessing.
There are 15 schools in Charlestown area.
In Charlestown?
There are 15, yeah.
Okay, yeah, there.
Chief, is that right? How many school zones, are you familiar with the number? There you are, there you are, 26. Okay, Counsel McAlire, did you want to follow up? Okay. Questions called, about this again? What is it? No, yeah.
One other question, when we were talking about schools, I'll ask it through the chair to the management, as you can recall, there was a meeting that took place last year at Birchwood Junior High School, with the school branch and the consultant for safety initiated the meeting, the principal was there, the vice principal and other representatives from the school, as well as the school branch, so the question is, when we're looking at the analytics and all that, well, information that was discussed at that meeting, is that all part and parcel to what's being discussed when you're looking at analytics and data? Because, because of the requests that came, came from the school branch about lighting on Longworth Avenue in front of the school, so is that all part and parcel to that?
I'm going to suggest that we bring up some of these concerns at our committee level, if there's anybody that has specific questions for the operational, until a criteria comes, then we'll bring it back through committee.
And on your committee, is Counsel Twill on the committee?
Twill is on the committee.
Okay, okay, questions called, all those in favor, please raise your hand, okay, ten zero. Ten. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Counsel McCain, next report, economic development, and that's Counselor Kevin Ramsey. Just push a button on there, okay?
Well, maybe that's a good sign, doesn't work, we met on January 19th, the minutes are in your package, we have no resolutions, a couple of things, we're all excited because Canada Games is starting to kick off this Friday, I drove up to Kensington Road there today, there was about six tractor trailers in there getting everything all ready for their opening ceremonies, very impressed, so I hope everybody's all up for it, and I think it's going to be fantastic for the city, for the province, we're going to be on a national showcase with TSN and all these other stations, so we have to put our best foot forward, I mean, which we always do, so I, I am very pleased with that, and if you have any questions, you can pass them on, thank you.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Yankoff.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Counselor Ramsey, for your report, just, I was reading in the minutes, the, the next step session that you had with the Immigrant Refugee Services Association, I'm just wondering if there's any more detail on how that session, that information session went, thank you.
Pass that on to Wayne Long, if you don't mind, your worship.
Go ahead.
Your worship, through the chair, so Counsel Yankoff, the Ursa, the Immigration Refugee Services Association, had a, a full day session recently that involved various government officials, elected and staffers, social professionals, community organizations, et cetera, to discuss some of the data collection that committed, how the newcomer community has been impacted as a result of the pandemic and beyond, the session went over very well, a number of discussions happened, there was a number of specific highlight table discussions that included various things such as labor shortages, workforce, housing, sport and recreation, harassment in public places, et cetera, was a great day, and there will be a further report that comes as a result of that, his worship attended the session, Counsel McCain was at the session, myself, as well as Charlotte Nicholson from our department as well, so it was a great day, everyone's interested to see, to receive the final package and the data that comes from that specific event.
Okay, Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, your worship, just wanted to mention, Canada Games comes, comes through my department, where, with my real job, so I know Wayne and, see Laurel's not here, but I just wanted to say thank you, I know you guys have done a lot of work towards the Canada Games and to make this a memorable experience for a lot of the athletes that are coming to Ireland, but I also want to thank, I believe it's Steve McFadgen with Public Works, who did all the lights and so on, made it so well for me, the downtown looks beautiful, I think for a lot of athletes and a lot of their parents and so on, PEI men, if you're a destination where they want to move to, because the city looks, looks beautiful, so again, thank you very much.
Counsel Twill.
Thank you for your report, Chair, I'd like to ask a question to Mr. Long with regard to that exercise that had taken place where there was a number of discussions, my question is, did discussions also center around some of the challenges for newcomers that come here that have credentials and qualifications, like for example, doctors, we often hear about shortage of doctors in our, in our province and in our city and country for that matter, and some of the obstacles that they have to face, there's an excellent article in the Chronicle Herald this past Saturday outlining a list of obstacles that, that some of these professionals have to face when they come here, and they get so frustrated that they come here, you know, the land of opportunity to be able to excel in their respective profession, and yet at the same time, they're regulated to, you know, delivering pizzas and working at, you know, fast food outlets in order to stay here when, when we have, you know, excellent opportunities for these, for these folks to practice their profession, so I'd encourage you to acquire that article and maybe we can have that discussion at our next Economic Development and Tourism Committee meeting, because it's, it's illustrative right across the country of some of the challenges that some of these people that come here that have excellent, excellent credentials, qualifications, particularly, I mentioned doctors, yet there's so many roadblocks that they, they just can't seem to, you know, practice their profession, so I think that's something we need to look at, Mr. Mayor and all members of council.
Thank you, Counsel Twill, Counsel Ramsey.
Yes, we'll certainly get that back when the report comes in, and we'll be looking through the report, Mr. Long, and we'll be seeing what we can do on that behalf too, because I also read those articles, thank you.
Wayne?
Good, good points, Counsel Twill, and thank you, Mr. Chair, the only thing that I would add to it is, I believe there was some discussion, it, it can't be forgotten that a lot of this challenges is a direct result of Canadian federal government criteria, so a lot of it is beyond this particular level of government, although this government can certainly have those discussions with organizations like Ursa and the provincial government, but a number of the credentials are as a result of, of policies and criteria of the federal government.
It's, it's federal and provincial, because provincial nominee program is a responsibility of the provincial government, Counsel McCain.
Thank you, I can't believe I'm talking again, but I do want to get up to say, you know, as past Chair of your committee, Counsel Ramsey, I noticed the event calendar is bustling with activity, and I really think it's great, kudos to your staff for all the work of trying to keep things going, keep our city going, following up on my experience with, with the newcomers' day, I feel that, you know, there was a really, it was great, there was a wide variety of partners that day that came together, and I think the most important thing is, as the conversations have started, and we can kind of determine what our role as a city is to kind of keep the pressure on moving forward, for sure, through your committee, Counsel Ramsey, as well, I saw that Porter Airlines is going to be starting to offer a new direct flight service between Charlestown and Ottawa, do you have any update on when this is starting or what the dates will be?
Counsel Ramsey.
Oh, sorry, your worship, I, I just received that this afternoon also, Mr. Long will probably do that, and I would like to say too, that our staff's been working very hard, we, so far in Charlestown, we had a great sporting events, we had, three weeks ago, the big ringette tournament, I think there's 70 or 80 teams, in fact, some teams from the mainland could not come over because there's no hotels, they're all filled, the Norsemen people were staying in Charlestown, that's a Monique tournament, the Spud was just two weeks ago, I believe, and then now we got the university hosting a national championship here in March after Canada Games, so the staff's been working hard, the city's doing well, so let's just hope everything goes smooth, and Wayne, maybe you can answer that question?
Your worship, through the chair, with respect to Porter Airline, Counsel McCain, it was a great announcement today, service will launch mid-May this coming spring and run up until the end of October or so, however, there's a ongoing communication and an effort to launch this as a potential year-round service, as well as expand Porter's footprint within the Charlestown region and beyond, so great news for YYG Charlestown and for our city.
Okay, that's it, okay, can we move on, and that's it, thank you, Counsel Ramsey, environment and sustainability?
Sustainability Committee, your worship, met on January the 18th, the minutes are in everyone's package, there is no resolutions for consideration tonight, your worship, but I do have some highlights I'd like counsel to know, your worship, very pleased the City of Charlotte has announced work on Phase One of the Climate Action Plan, the plan will help Charlestown build resilience to the impacts of climate change.
The plan will help Charlottetown build resilience to the impacts of climate change and extreme weather, while also reducing our greenhouse gas emissions and contributions to global climate change. In this first phase, the city is seeking survey responses from the community to gain input on development of Climate Action Plan, Your Worship, that meets the needs of the Charlottetown residents. So we're looking to get some, some feedback from them. And I think some of the elected officials should have got a first survey, the elected officials fill out. The survey will set goals and guiding principles for the first development of the Climate Action Plan, expected to start later this year. So the survey, Your Worship, is live until February, the end of the day of February 19th. It can be accessed at charlottetownhall.ca/climbaction. So if you could spread that to as many people as you can. We'd like to have as many responses, the city of Charlottetown, let us know what their thoughts are. Your Worship, the second round of Better Homes Neighborhood Energy Project wrapped up this past Saturday. That's 22 households in the 500-lot area that participated in this partnership with efficiency PEI. So it's supported homes in completing energy upgrades and getting a better understanding of the barriers in doing so. Households received a free energy audit and a one-on-one consultation to discuss energy efficiency upgrades as recommended from the audit. So it's, it's great to have that one-on-one with a lot of the constituents in the city. 500-lot area obviously would have been picked because there's a lot of older homes there. So try to get the information out and see what barriers are to developing some, getting into energy efficiency within your homes. The flood protection rebate program, we talked about that a little bit last month. Just want to let everybody know that now with an eligible quote, a flood protection rebate can be placed on hold while residents wait for a contractor to complete the work. So we know how busy contractors are, it's taking some time, so that you get approval, that, that can be on hold. The home flood protection rebates have been approved, averaging $870 per, per household. Rebates have mainly gone towards sump pumps and backup battery systems. And the deadline to apply, that, that fund is still open until April 30th. So if someone's not, you know, they want to have their sump pump replaced, or they want to get one that the power goes out and you have a battery pack, it's certainly open to applications, so. The other thing, Your Worship, January saw almost 100,000 riders using our public transit in Charlottetown. Never thought I'd be standing here saying this, but 100,000 people in one month. So it's, yeah, it's certainly expanding big time, and we're pretty proud of that. So we will be working to expand the program. We, we hear some concerns from some residents, so we're looking to deal with that now. And tree removal work from Fiona's is, we have that list that we had last month of 1,100. 602 residences properties were completed, and there's 481 properties left. And the weather continues to cooperate. At the current rate, we should have them completed by April. So, and just, I just want to touch on, you know, when we talked about the, the Better Homes and Neighborhood Energy Audit, and we talked about some barriers and so on. We haven't, we just had an award for the switch program, and I believe Counselor McKinnon was up there with some staff here to accept that award. Thank you, by the way, for going on my behalf. And it was, it was nice to be recognized for, for the program, you know, it works so well. So people can get insulation, you know, new doors, new windows, solar panels, heat panels, whatever, for energy efficiency. And the reason that the, the program is so popular and it's, and it's won its awards is that some of the barriers are financial. So you can go and spend, whether you want to do a heat pump, or you need a hot, a hot water heater, whatever that work is, you can wrap all them up. You can do your insulation, your doors, your heat pump, but you can wrap it into a financial program that's zero percent financing, and you can wrap that up for 15 years. So you can spend $30,000, a lot, energy efficiency within your home, and a lot of the times, we're finding out that the amount of money it's saving is not only covering the loan, but there's money left over. So the word is getting out, the program's getting very popular, hence the award. It's nice to get the award, but it's, it's the recognition to get more and more people up to speed and let them know about the program. So, Your Worship, if there's any questions on the report, I'll do my best to answer them. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counsel Ramsey. Counselor Beck?
Thank you for your report, Counselor Bernard. I found it very interesting, actually, particularly on the transportation side. I know I've had conversations with Mike Cassidy in the past, and you talk about a guy who's passionate about transport. Just sit with Mike and you're shaking after a few minutes with excitement, which is great, because we need champions for that sort of stuff. I was curious about, looking at the riders, I mean, you're, you're looking, some of them, 30,000 for the month, 10,000 for the month, 9,000. Then we get these outliers of like 1, 266, I don't know if my readers aren't very good here, but, you know. What routes are those, Counselor Bernard? Maybe if you could just sort of, they just seem quite a discrepancy in them. I'm just wondering what they, what routes they are and where they served. And the other thing I found interesting was that Tuesdays seemed to be about 20% higher than the rest of the week. I'm just wondering if there's a reason why that is. It just, they were just numbers that kind of jumped out at me when I was looking at the statistics that were provided. If there's any answers, there's no answers, that's fine too.
He's drilled down into the numbers there, Counselor Bernard.
Could you see somebody reading the report?
Oh, no, he's, he's.
It depends on the route.
Former principal.
If you go onto, if you go onto the website, T3 Transit, you'll see that there's nine routes that show up there. One, two, and three are usually the most popular ones. Depending on, on the route you're looking at, which one has got the higher clientele. They're all improving, but the numbers are going to fluctuate depending where that bus is going and whether you're way at one, at one end of the city, or whether you're right downtown, the city of Charlottetown. So, for example, Route 1, that's constantly going from University Avenue out. That would have a higher number. But there's also a new route that just started, Route 23. So there's been some changes made. And like I say, we'll be looking to make more changes and continue to improve. And the ridership is, is one of the exciting notes that we wanted to highlight to the city council. And we have been in talks with provincial government. We are looking to make some expansions here to the transit system. So hopefully we'll be able to make an announcement pretty soon. Thank you.
Good there, Counsel Beck? It's all good news with the numbers of, number of riders across the city. Counsel McLeire?
Thank you, Worship. This, Counselor Bernard, just on the minutes, it talks about bus shelters. Request on the updated 10 bus shelters coming in. Can you give us a sense where those shelters are slotted for? Or have they, or do they have a location yet?
Counsel Bernard?
Thank you, Counsel McLeire. No, those are 10, 10 shelters that we've been talking about purchasing. We're looking to do a, a group, a group purchase to get better prices. So that hasn't happened yet, the purchase hasn't happened yet, and there's, the, the locations aren't designated yet. And again, and I'll say too, there's been some requests for some locations, and there's going to be more as, as the transit system expands. But it's to get the pricing and buy in bulk, I guess is the word I'm looking for. So we'll be looking to buy a number of them, so. Thank you.
Counsel Ramsey?
Thank you for your report, Counsel Bernard. Just to touch on the transit, I'm very excited because I was one of the, well, yeah, like, I mean, I don't get excited that often, but anyway, like, I was one of the first drivers that was hired on, and I I'm getting back to Counselor Beck's comments there, when you, like, when you said with Mike Cassidy, it's, it's very excitable because we used to drive around streets and blocks and neighborhoods and everything, and there'd be people walking home. And Mike would say, "Pull the bus over, Kevin, ask that guy he wants to get in the bus," and all, you know, things of that. So it's really grown in the last 10, 12, 14 years, Donna, or something like that. And, yeah, these are all positive comments. And one more I have is, I know people that went on the switch program, Counsel Bernard, and on the energy audit. They're very, very pleased with it, so thank you for that. Thank you.
Counsel Bernard?
Counsel Ramsey, for your comments. I know when you did drive the bus, you were highly regarded. A lot of seniors loved you, so, anyway, thanks for those comments.
Was he part of that runaway bus there down Grafton Street? Okay, 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 let's move on, move on. Oh, did you, Counsel Twill? Go ahead there. You have to press a button.
I did press the button. I do that quite often, but for some strange reason, it doesn't seem to be working. So maybe we'll get the roar.
Okay, just ask your question. What's your question?
To look at that and find out why that's, why it's taking place. Counsel Bernard, you alluded to the tree recovery program and the number of, you know, work to be done. I understand the, there's a deadline, and deadline has passed with respect to who's eligible or when they can apply or can't apply. But there seems to be some frustration with some of the residents with regards to the program. Some cases, the program is too restrictive, it's too narrow in scope. And I think I made a suggestion, might have been the last time, you know, to have a meeting with the province and the feds to see if that program can be expanded. For example, you know, if, if a trunk, tree, tree trunk is still on the side of a neighborhood street, some of these trunks are massive, they're, they're humongous. And it's unreasonable to expect a taxpayer to, to, you know, spend thousands and thousands of dollars to remove these huge tree trunks that are right on, on, on the neighborhood streets and, and, you know, that's, that's all over the city. But I know several. And it just, it just seems like every time that someone calls in, "No, you're not eligible, you don't meet the criteria, it could be leaning up against a, a burn or, or, or the, I don't know, it fell across your trade, your neighbor's property," whatever the case may be. I know that there is restrictions, but I'd like you to meet with the province and the feds to see what we can do to eliminate how restrictive it truly is and, and how narrow that scope is, and to see if we can make it much more broader, make the criteria much more broader so that more residents can take advantage of the program. I know some good work has been done, but I really believe more needs to be done. And there are some frustrations with the residents, I've heard it. And I'd like to eliminate that frustration, thank you.
Thank you. Do we note it there? I know there are a lot of other municipalities in the queue looking for Fiona's support from the provincial and federal governments in Nova Scotia, New Brunswick, so there's, it's a big issue out there.
And I mean, we said before we'd have that discussion. I know I used to ask you these questions when you chaired the committee. So I don't think anything was done there, but we'll try. You're talking about stumps, or you're talking about just the tree program itself and the trees that are down, or?
I'm talking about everything. And the thing was, when the announcement was made, it was made, I believe, in October, Donna. So, you know, really, I only chaired the committee maybe once or twice afterwards. And I did talk to a CIO about meeting with the province and with the feds, and I did indicate that at our last meeting. So, you know, in terms of my time with this particular program, it was pretty well null and void. I didn't have much of an opportunity, but I did do my diligence and did bring it up last month. I have since received emails and phone calls from residents that are extremely, extremely frustrated because there, there seems to be, you know, if it's not an obstacle, it's a roadblock. It's not a roadblock, oh, you don't qualify, or, or the, or the date has expired, or whatever the case may be. So that's why I bring it up, to see if what we can do to expand the program, extend the, expand the criteria, and, and to make it much easier for residents. And also, when they do cut a tree down, and I'm not saying this happens in all cases, but they don't, they don't come back and clean it up, and they just leave, leave, leave the branches and the trees on, 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 on the resident's property. So, again, I think we need to go over that, do an evaluation and assessment, and go over that particular program to see what we can do to make it better.
So I, I still haven't heard what it is you want done to the program. You're saying that some people aren't eligible because they don't meet the criteria, so you want the criteria relaxed? Or what is it that they're, what is it that they're not doing that you want done?
Well, I want, I want the criteria to look at because some residents feel it's too restrictive.
In what way, in what way?
In a lot of, in a lot of ways, in a lot of ways. I think, I think our, I think our manager would have that information, but.
It's only, it's only restrictive if it's, if it's, if it's an insurance claim. If it's not an insurance claim, then it meets the criteria. It's only even restrictive if it's under an insurance claim. If it's on a house, or it's on something that's an insurance claim, then we won't touch it. But other than that, if it's not an insurance claim, we go in and, and take the tree down. We, we cut the tree up and remove it.
Yeah, plus, yeah, but you leave the tree, you leave the trunks.
Well, that's another issue altogether.
I know, I know, but there seems to be.
But that's not part of the criteria. You're asking me to review the criteria?
I'm asking.
Or you're asking for a new program for stumps? It's two different things.
Well, anyway, there, there's a list there that needs to be looked at. I mean, it's, it's no, it's no, you know, it's not a mystery as to some of the challenges of this particular program. Like I said, it is too restrictive, it is narrow in scope, and I asked this last month, and I asked it out of sincerity in behalf of the residents, so.
What I will tell you is.
Counsel Bernard, it's something, no, just one second. It's something that if, if we, if the criteria can't be changed from the provincial or federal, that's something we'll have to put in our operational budget, which will take from something else. Anyways, that's something.
That's why I'm trying to differentiate between what is asked.
I know.
Anyway, as far as the stumps, our committee has put in money in the budget.
Yeah.
Council will have to pass it. We put in some money to start a program. Criteria will have to be drawn up on, not stumps to be grinded, but stumps that are huge, stumps that are tipped up, and it seems to be pretty expensive for, for residents to try and have them removed. I know of one case in particular, it's a $2,500 fee, fairly big stump, it's backyard. We put some money in. We're, we will have some talk with our government partner, see if they want to partner on it. But right now, we do have money, an ask in the budget. So when that comes to council, we'll look for support. And if, if we get that money, then we'll come up with some criteria to put a program together.
That's great.
Okay, so it was reasonable what I was asking.
Thank you, Your Worship. Question for the Chair, going back to transit. When the shelters come into town, is there process in place? Does the city pick the locations, or they go back to the transit company? How does that, how will that work?
We'll work in consultation with T3, the transit company. We'll work in consultation, because obviously they're, they're driving the buses. They'll have a good indication of where the, where the busy traffic is. Plus, we'll be able to have input on that also.
Okay, so, sorry, if, so I have, if we have a couple of areas in there that we see there's an issue, do we bring it to the committee, or do we, how do we address that?
Yeah, I, I think, and Counsel McKinnon, just like you did before, you and I had a phone conversation. You were talking about a couple of areas of concern. So when that time comes, we'll discuss that, and we'll also discuss it with T3. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bernard, and thank you, our manager. Okay, strategic priorities, you have no resolutions, correct? No, no, no resolutions for environment sustainability. Strategic priorities, communications, and intergovernmental cooperation. Counselor Norman Beck, Ward Three.
Thank you, Your Worship. So the, we, we had the opportunity to meet on January 26th, and the draft minutes are in your binder. There is one omission on the first page, and that would be our SIO. And since we're on the acronym theme, that would be Strategic Initiatives Officer, Carly Seopis. And so, anyway, Carly, Carly was at the meeting. She's quite an important person on our committee, so a bit of an oversight with her name being there. Not being there, I should say. A, a couple of things I do want to highlight. One of the measures that we tasked Carly with, and I do want to speak to Carly just for a second. I'm, I'm very impressed at her professionalism, at her level of detail, at her organizational skills, her thought process. And the work that she's put together is pretty impressive. And what I really like about her, her, her work is that it's not only coming up with action plans, but very measurable means to track progress, to keep us abreast. It's not going to be, like, when the strategic plan comes out, it's not going to be a document that will be sitting and collecting dust and say, "Where are we?" We will have very measurable, reportable information that come back to us, and I think that will help keep us on task and keep us on track with, with the information. So if you ever see Carly, give her a pat in the back and say, "Thanks for your work," because she's, she does a great job. Just the one thing that was mentioned before, we had a couple of emails we did receive. You think back about Christmas, we had some emails about the sign, the religious sign that was down at the end of North River Road. We said that we would address it at the committee level. We did address it at the committee level. We felt that it would probably be best served, since we are looking at a, a request for the diversity, equity, and inclusion framework, that that may be something that could fall under that point, that that could be a discussion item, that could be part of that. So rather than having a discussion item now, we thought, given the timing of the RFP for the, for the D, RFP for the DEI, the RFP for that proposal, that it would fit in well there. So. So, um, anyway, if there's any other question, oh, one other thing I, I think we did mention, um, I, I did have a chance to talk with Carly just before coming in here, but, uh, you will get the, uh, the pillars, if they were referencing the pillars and, uh, what the pro, what the, uh, uh, the, uh, strategic plan will look like. So that will be forthcoming, so you will see what I was kind of talking about. So we, we don't have it here tonight, but you will be getting it in the very near future too. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Beck. Deputy Mayor Yankoff.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I'm on the committee, so I don't really have any particular questions on the meeting. I'm pretty excited about the strategic plan, but I, every time I meant to bring this up and forget, and I only remember when we're in a council meeting, and it's a question of, and, cause I T now falls under this committee, and we spent all this money on upgrading this amazing system, um, but we're not voting on it. And do we, do we know why the voting process is not working on the screen? Thanks.
Tracy? I, I know that, uh, the, the contractor was in this past week or last week, so there are some issues that are part of the upgrade, yeah. But that live stream is still working, so that's, we're still being broadcasted over YouTube and anyone can see it now or archive it for later. Counsel McLeire.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, Counsel Rebecca, don't, don't know if, uh, you can speak to this or not, and it may be a question to, uh, C A O, um, but just, just in the minutes, Atlantic Lottery Corporation, just in referencing the, uh, the $400,000 paid to the city for fire protection services, that sort of thing, I just wonder if, kind of might, might be able to elaborate, is that, is that a, is that an annual kind of thing or is it a, and?
Oh, Your Worship, uh, to the chair, to yourself, um, this, uh, ever since the, um, the red, red, red shores opened, that was a, a, a fee that we, that was, uh, an amount of money the city has received on an annual basis to assist with such things as, um, our police, our fire, and also something like exhibition drive because we've had so much more traffic there now than we would have if, if we didn't have a casino, uh, we did some work on Kensington Road as well. So that's a fee that most municipalities receive, I don't know, who host large casinos like we do, um, throughout the, throughout the region. We received this letter from the province, I've, I'm in the process of asking, uh, um, the public works manager and the two chiefs to kind of give us some idea of the kinds of money that has been spent around there over the years, um, and, uh, I, they say they're doing a review, uh, they haven't contacted us since.
Thank you for that.
We have one resolution.
Moved by Counsel Beck and seconded by Counsel Yankoff, that the mayor and C A O be authorized to enter into a binding agreement with the Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation, C M H C, as per the terms and conditions set out and reviewed by mayor and council on December 19th, 2022, and further that the mayor and C A O be authorized to enter into a third-party agreement with an agreed-upon intermediary to execute the schedule of work as set out in the aforementioned agreement with C M H C.
Question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine zero and Counsel Ramsey is absent. Okay, next report is, I believe, Finance, that's Counsel John McLeire.
Thank you, Uh, Your Worship. Um, the Finance Audit, Tendering and Administration Committee, uh, met, uh, January 25th, uh, 23. The minutes are circulated in your, circulated in your package. There's also, uh, three, uh, three resolutions that have been included in the package for your consideration, and, and these are three resolutions that I'm gonna have, uh, the C A O, Donna Waddell, speak to. They're, um, they, uh, been, um, something that's, uh, wanting to get, uh, done and resolved and settled for a long time, and Donna can speak to the history of these and walk us through them and, uh, answer, answer your questions, I trust. Thank you.
Your Worship, uh, moved by Counsel McLeire and seconded by Counsel McKay, that the city, that the city agree, agrees to extend the memorandum of agreement, M O A, with Hall and College for the use of the property located at 235 Fitzroy Street, P I D number 346676, to use as a parking lot for an additional five years with an expiration date of December 31, 2027, and that Hall and College just agrees to reimburse the city yearly for all property taxes, water and sewer fees and cooperating costs for said, said property for, until the expiration of the M O A, and further that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard agreements, contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
No, we have some questions. Counsel Matart, Counsel Ramsey, Counsel Duran.
Thank you, Uh, Your Worship. Just a question on the property at 235 Fitzroy Street. For a five-year term, uh, do we have an out on that? Cause I think it read that it also talks about, you know, we need to come up with a long-term plan for this property as a city, so-
Yes, one, one year. Either party, one year.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Ramsey.
Thank you for your report. Uh, does that include snow removal too?
Yes, they do the snow removal.
Now, through the chair to Donna?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's looked after by Hall and College, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. No, it's just that it's not there. Thank you.
Counsel Duran.
Um, thank you. Uh, I'm just asking, what did you say, Donna? Was there one year out? Sorry? Okay, I just didn't see it here. Okay. I think that's what we discussed, but I wasn't sure. Thank you.
Uh, Donna, is that in the background report? I didn't see that.
It's, it was in the, was it? It was in the discussion, um, at the, at the Finance Committee meeting, and it will be in the agreement.
It will be in the agreement, okay. Okay, question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Ten zero.
Moved by Counsel McLeire and seconded by Counsel McKay, that the city granted an easement over its, over its property, P I D 804823, located on Queen Street, to the Gray Group, for use as access to future development on their property, P I D number 374140, fronting on University Avenue. That the Gray Group shall pay the city $42,000 for the easement and reimburse the city for all costs associated with finalizing the easement agreement, including but not limited to legal fees, land survey, legal land surveyor fees, easement, registration, et cetera, and that the Gray Group and its assigns reimburse the city annually for all property taxes on P I D number 804823, for as long as the easement is registered on the property, and further that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this recommendation.
No, it's on Upper Queen Street, um, by Mary's Field, Brown's Court.
Okay. Okay, question?
Question's called.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand.
I'm, I'm sorry. I just need a little bit more clarification on what we're, I, I tried looking up this property, P I D number, and I'm not very good at researching P I D's numbers on, online. Can you give me a little bit more background in terms of where this is exactly so I can visualize it? And I'm, I'm a little bit unclear as to what they're looking for.
They, the Gray Group have bought a large parcel of land fronting on University Avenue across from, across from the university. Um, they will need a second access and egress to that property. This is a residual, we, we don't really know the history of the, but what we're all kind of guessing is that this is a residual, um, parcel of land from when they developed Mary's Field. It's a very small little piece of land, you can't, you couldn't put a residence on it. It's right on a corner, and this will allow them to have a second access in and out of their property.
So is it kind of, is it in relationship to the lights, is it like going north of those lights at the main entrance to U P E I or is it?
No, no, it's on Queen Street.
Is it like by, uh, the Maritime Christian College, somewhere around there?
Yeah.
In that area?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Maritime, but it's on Queen Street, it's on Upper Queen Street, it's in Mary's Field, Brown's Court, in that area.
Okay.
They can't have two exits onto University Avenue.
Okay.
So they're gonna have a little space that they can drive over to get into.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, against nine one, Counsel Duran opposed.
Moved by Counsel McLeire and seconded by Counsel McKay, that the city agrees to extend the existing lease agreement with the Charlatan Boys and Girls Club for the use of property located at 35 St. Peters Road, P I D number 274209, for an additional 10 years with an expiration date of December 31st, 2032, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel Beck, do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, ten zero. Counsel McLeire, that's it? Thank you. Okay. Okay, um, Human Resources, and that's Counsel Justin Matart.
Okay, I'll try to be quick here. Uh, the Human Resource Committee did not meet the last regular council meeting, and therefore there are no resolutions for council's consideration. Uh, if you do have any questions, I would, uh, do my best to answer those. Our manager is absent tonight, but if you have any questions, I can take them back. Hearing no questions?
Thank you, Counsel Matart. Okay. Protective and Emergency Services, and that's Counsel McKinnon. I believe Chief Mamie Sick is ill tonight, so he'll be, only the chief is here, Chief of Police Brad McConnell.
Uh, yes, Chief Mamie did send his regrets, he's not feeling well. Uh, Protective and Emergency Services Committee met on January 24th, 2023, and the minutes are included in your package for, for review. An email was circulated around to the committee members with regards to attached property cleanup resolution and consensus of the committee to forward on to council for your consideration. And with that, there's two resolutions to be considered in the package.
Okay, uh, Counsel McKinnon, um, my statement I'd like to make is, on February 8th, I attended the information session held by the harm reduction team regarding the safe injection site on 33 Belmont Street. The session was met with strong opposition on the location by the residents and businesses who were highly concerned for their safety, their property and their well-being. The area is comprised of many businesses, families, seniors alike. So my questions are, and this will be directed to city police services, is, is city police services involved in any joint plan with the provincial government to ensure additional safety measures are met and put in place in and around 33 Belmont Street? And if so, does the policing services have the capacity to provide these additional policing services?
Um, Counsel McKinnon, do you want to just defer that to the police chief or do you want to?
Um, yeah, I will defer that to the police chief services, cause I can't answer to the services of the police.
Police Chief McConnell.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, Your Worship, we are, uh, certainly in collaboration and have been for quite some time with, uh, the provincial government regarding, um, not just this overdose protection site, but the other nexus of services that are supplied in that area. We have put forth a proposal, um, to the province to assist us in meeting the community expectations of safety that have been, uh, have raised concerns, and, uh, we will, uh, continue to work with them to try to meet those community expectations. Um, certainly, uh, I've certainly raised awareness to the need for additional policing resources, um, in our city, and, uh, we've been very challenged. Um, so certainly, uh, it will be a challenge, uh, to meet that expectation without, without assistance, um, but certainly, uh, we'll do our best, so we have a great team at the CPS, and, uh, I attended both of those sessions, uh, last week. I wanted to hear from the citizens firsthand about their concerns. I certainly did. I heard, uh, passion on both sides of the conversation, and, uh, will be working with my team and, uh, the other stakeholders to try to, um, keep everyone safe, uh, as it relates to, uh, that area and the services provided.
Deputy Mayor Yankoff, nope, Counsel Matart will come back to it. Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
Thank you, and thank you for your report. Counsel McKinnon, I'm just wondering if maybe the next, um, uh, Protective and Emergency Services Committee meeting, we have, we could, um, have a, another look at the E M O bylaw. Um, I've just been reviewing it and I just have some questions on it, but, um, not really prepared for this evening just because it's a kind of a last-minute request, but if we could just add that to the next agenda and, um, have that conversation. Thank you.
Go ahead there, Counsel. Okay, Counsel Matart?
Uh, thank you, Chief McConnell, for that update. Um, I appreciate your efforts and your continued efforts into helping, uh, work through this situation, um, one of, of safety and concern by the residents of, in and around 33 Belmont Street. So, uh, as we progress and more information comes, uh, I would ask that you please share that with, uh, council through your committee, uh, to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel McKinnon, did you want to respond or, no? Counsel McLeire?
Yes, uh, Counselor McKinnon, just, uh, wondered, um, in the minutes, uh, on the, uh, new fire station, um, just wondered if you can confirm, um, if the, uh, updated, uh, fire underwriter's, uh, survey has been requested, uh, and is it, uh, just where we are with that?
Counsel McLeod? Uh, Counsel McKinnon, sorry.
Uh, thank you for your question, Counsel McLeire. Um, I was talking to our Chief Mamie, uh, previously about that, and I don't believe that the, the underwriter survey is gonna be back until June, and, and we'll have answers at that time of what, um, what that outlines for the appropriate areas to put the fire stations.
Counsel McLeire, just one second. Counsel Twill's there, then he'll come back to you. Counsel Twill?
Thank you. Uh, just to follow up, Counsel Matart, I wasn't at the, uh, those two sessions that were held on Belmont Street, but, uh, I have received phone calls and emails from residents in the community. Uh, number one, they weren't happy with the format, with the format, uh, as it was presented to the community. Uh, they felt that the, the decision was, was made without proper consultation, uh, of the residents impacted on Belmont, Escher, uh, Kensington Road, uh, Dresden Court, St. Peters Road, um, so as, as far as the residents are concerned, and I make, wanna make it quite clear, they are not in favor of this location whatsoever. It's their determination to have this location moved to another site where it doesn't negatively impact on, on some of the folks and some of the, uh, some of the, uh, uh, members of the neighborhood that Dustin Matart had just, just announced. So, uh, let's be clear here, they are not in favor of this location.
Yeah.
They're not in favor of the way this was presented to the community. Now, this, this has been going on now for two years, and what has, what has really struck me was, we see articles on the front page of The Guardian, we have a closed-door session with the province of Prince Edward Island.
Counsel Twill?
No, no, I got the floor, Mr. Mayor.
No, no, that, that, that's a closed session. Could you just get to your point? Get to your point?
You gotta let me do my job, Mr. Mayor. You're interfering and undermining me.
No, no, but you're two minutes over all the time. Go ahead, two minutes.
No, you're undermining me. And you know what? And you know what? You shouldn't be doing that.
No, but you go on, two minutes. Let's go.
No, I don't want to. I have enough time to speak, and you're interrupting me.
You got five minutes there.
I'm trying to book my thought process.
You got five minutes there.
I'm telling you to stop doing it.
You got five minutes there.
You know what? You know what, Mr. Mayor? I don't know why you...
I'm going to say a point of order at this committee for both.
Yep.
Okay?
Good.
Let's get back to what we're supposed to be doing.
Okay, and stop interfering.
Yeah, let's get back here. Okay.
So we had a public meeting, or we had a, we had a, we had a, we had a closed-door session with the province of Prince Edward Island.
Counsel, again, Counsel Twill, those are closed meetings?
Would you let me finish? I'm just trying to reference it. You're not letting me finish.
Please finish.
Okay, so we had a closed-door session with the province of Prince Edward Island that should have been held in a public forum. It should have been held because two years ago, the chief of police at the time made a presentation to a standing committee, and you can read about it in the Hanser, which I did. And that was held in a public forum. So the question becomes, why are these sessions being held in a closed-door session?
Counsel Twill, the meeting was held in a closed...
Okay, Mr. Mayor, take over. Go ahead.
It was in a closed forum.
Which is our meeting, which is our...
We're talking about our meeting, which was in a closed meeting. Okay, Counselor McKinnon, can you answer?
Oh, it's the province, the police process of the thought, yeah.
Was it closed meeting?
Do you have a question to share on that? This was a provincial issue, is that correct?
It is.
I don't...
Okay. Counselor McKinnon, did you want to say something?
No, I was going to respond to that, but because it was a closed-door meeting, Mr. Twill was here at that time, and he was aware of the decisions that were made.
Yeah. And Counselor Matar, the deputy, myself, were at the meeting at the Murchison Center, and there was a clear indication, Counselor Matar, we were at several tables. We're waiting for the data that they're going to collect. Sean Martin and his group are going to collect data, and that data hopefully will come back to the public before a final decision is made. Okay. Counselor Twill?
Could you please tell me, Mr. Mayor, as the mayor of this city, what involvement the city of Charlatan has with this exercise in terms of the safe injection site? Who's involved and on whose authority?
We are involved with the zoning and development of this property, and the zoning and development of this property, I believe, was checked out by Counselor Matar and myself through planning, and the permissible use for this site is allowed at 33 Belmont Street. Correct, Counselor Matar?
That's correct, Your Worship. I definitely required to ensure that everything was above board, and it did check out that it is. You know, unfortunately, there's not much we can do on that point, but nonetheless, I think, you know, we'll, you know, we'll reiterate, you know, it's not an ideal location. The residents of Ward Two in that area and surrounding area are not in favor of that, and we hope that based on the information that was received at the information sessions, that that overwhelming response will be collected, and hope that the provincial government will, in fact, take a pause on this location to determine the impacts from a safety perspective, from a property perspective, and people's well-being, because there's a lot of people who are very anxious about this situation, and it was well... And so I do want to reiterate that, you know, and we're just trying to make sure that we're doing this in a way that we have good information, hence my questions to the chief police here tonight to find out about additional policing services.
Yeah.
And what that plan may look like going forward. Thank you.
Yeah. And Counselor Matar, again, you were at three tables that I sat at. Counselor, Deputy Mary Yankoff was at two. One was very active and emotional. The message was clear, because you and I were there along with the deputy. We listened firsthand, asked the questions, and I know Counselor Matar asked that I want to see the full report of these two meetings before any decision or before any further action goes forward. Is that correct, Counselor Matar?
That's correct, yeah. I mean, we certainly...
Thank you for your participation.
We want to see the information that comes in there, yeah.
Okay. Counsel Bernard?
Counselor McKinnon, I just, I never caught your answer there about when he asked about the fire hall. Something about six months?
The fire underwriter study, Chief Mamie said he should be back in June or July with that study to counsel, and at that time, he'll, we'll be able to review it and see where the stations are best located based on that study.
Now, this is a new study?
I believe so, but I believe it is.
So, we left it... So the last four years, we wasted our time, sort of sounds like. We just throw everything out, all the decisions that were made, all the plans that were made, we're throwing that out? Is that what I'm hearing here?
I wasn't here to be privy to that beforehand.
No, no, I don't, I don't, I'm not accusing you, I'm just wondering, is that...
But the drawings for the third station or the new station will not change. Those drawings are done. That was where the focus of the work was.
But it sounds like we don't know where it's going.
That's what the study is to give Counsel Bernard, the study will give us locations that's best suited for the residents of the city for safe locations for the fire, fire stations, and also they're in arbitration with their unions, looking at staffing it as well.
Thank you.
And Counsel Bernard, I know Counselor McLeir was at the last police Protective and Emergency Services Committee meeting. Counsel McKinnon, you have no problem with other counselors attending your meeting, do you?
Absolutely not. Counselor McLeir came into our last committee meeting, and I put send the invite out to anybody that wishes to step in and sit down with us. Feel free, more than welcome.
No, and I appreciate that. I didn't, I didn't think there was a need to.
No.
Thought the decisions were all made, and we're waiting for a tender. So, thank you.
Okay. So we have two resolutions. CAO Donna, number one?
Moved by Counsel McKinnon and seconded by Counsel Ramsey, that as per the conditions of the RFP for towing service, the submission of Shaw's Towing Service Limited be accepted for a two-year period as per the attached.
Counsel Duran?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I'm just wondering, when you look at the background here, the numbers are drastically advanced to one person, one company, and we're only going out for two years. It seems that we go out and then we're back again looking for an RFP. I'm wondering if this could be, you know, a friendly amendment put on for, you know, if we're satisfied with, with the two years, then another two years could be added. Like, you know, it just seems silly to me. We continuously do this, right? Would that be a possibility? Through the chair?
Donna, do you want, or who's, the chair is?
Mr. McKinnon?
Go ahead.
Sorry?
I defer to the police chief on that. I would certainly see, I don't know if the other party would be, Shaw's would be interested in it, but certainly, I'm sure the city would be if Shaw's were.
I'm just waiting for it to click in. I'm just wondering, like, sometimes we do it if we're satisfied with the tender, then, and they're satisfied with the service, rather than, I mean, this is not, you're not missing it on one point. It's, it's, you know, 70, 80, 90 points, right? So, I mean, they have the, the equipment, the yard, you know, it just seems that, you know, this is repetitious to me. So, thank you.
Chief, when's the last time we had a tender for this?
Your Worship, I would have to check the date on that.
It's more than five years ago.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a while. To Counselor Duran's point, the police services would have no objection to that, long as we were in alignment with our procurement policies and procedures.
But what I see in other tenders, that, you know, if we came out with a tender and they get it and we're satisfied, do we have an option of adding, you know, two years or whatever to it? That's what I'm asking.
We would normally put that in the tender upfront, so in this instance, we didn't. So we'd have to check and see with our tendering people on that, Counselor Duran, but I think perhaps the chief can take that back for another time, so to perhaps extend it, but you have to put that, you normally would have to put that right in your tender from the, from the get-go.
Which seems right, but why do we not do it? Why do we do it for some and not others? Like, I know we went to a snowblown business, and, you know, that came up. Well, why would we do it for that and not something like this, right? So, you know, it seems foolish to me, right? But thank you for that.
Counsel Duran, again, it was the tender that went out, and I think that's a good point, but it should be for a five-year period when we look at it again. Chief, is that all right with you? Who's that?
Your Worship, yes, I've made note of that.
Okay. Go ahead. Counselor McCabe?
I was going to say, maybe we can take this back to our finance for our procurement bylaw too, where we can incorporate some of that language, and that way, it gives people that opportunity.
Yep. Good point. Okay. Question?
Questions called.
All those in favor, please put up your hand. Ten zero.
Moved by Counsel McKinnon and seconded by Counsel Ramsey, that the Public Works Manager be authorized to remove any garbage and other materials or debris, cleanup and property disposal same at the owner's expense of the following properties located at 57 Bayfield Street, 61 Bayfield Street, Six Pond Street, and the PID numbers are listed there, Your Worship, in accordance with the terms of the Dangerous, Hazardous, and Unsightly bylaw of the City of Charlatan.
Counsel McLeir, do you have a question?
I can wait till it goes.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just curious on these, you know, at, you know, at the owner's expense, these 57, 61, Six Pond Street, just what's the history like on the, on the collection of these historically? Is it residents end up eventually paying their bill?
Counsel McKinnon?
Thank you for your question, Counsel McLeir. From what I understand, there's a history for each one of these properties, the bylaw officer would have attended more than once, a letter probably would have been sent out to the person, and the expenses is incurred back to the property owners for the cleanup.
Your Worship, if I can just add to that, it is registered on, the costs are registered on their deed, so that if they don't pay for it when the property is sold, they'll be collected at that time.
There's encumbrance put on the property.
There's encumbrance on their property.
Yeah. Okay. Question called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. New business?
Moved by Counsel Bernard and seconded by Counsel McCabe, that effective immediately, the following appointments be recommended by His Worship Mayor Philip Brown be approved. Charlatan Civic Center Management Board, CCMI, George Matthews; Confederation Center of the Arts Board of Directors, Deputy Mayor Alana Jankov; Downtown Charlatan, Inc., Board of Directors, Counselor John McLeir; the Guild Board of Directors, Kelly Mooney and Haley Doherty.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Ten zero.
So we're at the end, and we have a resolution, a motion to move into a closed section as per Section 119, subsection 1B, D, E, and F of the Municipal Government Act of Prince Edward Island. B, information received in confidence, which if disclosed, would likely be prejudicial to the municipality or parties involved.
Let me, let me put the resolution on...
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize.
D, human resource matters including labor relations or employee negotiations. E, a matter still under consideration on which the council has not yet publicly announced a decision and about which discussion in public would likely prejudice, prejudice a municipality's ability to carry out its negotiations. And F, the conduct of existing or anticipated legal proceedings or the review of legal counsel. So I need someone to move and second that. Moved by Counsel McKinnon.
Just to go in closed session?
Yeah, but just, I'm going to put the resolution of Counselor Beck. Resolution's on the floor?
I got a question on this.
Yes, go right ahead.
As we all found out the last little while, especially the new counselors, once we go into closed session, by the time we leave here, it's out there. So what is the purpose of going in closed session if it's going to be leaked out there? I mean, that's just my personal opinion, because we had two or three closed sessions the last two or three weeks. By the time, by the time we're driving home, the vote went 7-2, or 8-1, or 6-4, or something along that line. So, you know, I'm just assuming going closed session, but my God, people, if it's closed session, it's closed session. Thank you.
Counsel McLeir, do you have a question? Now we're going to take the vote. Okay, we need to vote on this. All those in favor of going to closed session, please raise your hand. Okay. Counselors McCabe, Beck, McKinnon, Counselors, Deputy Mayor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Yankoff, Counselors Bernard, McLeir, Ramsey, and Matar. Those against? Counselor Duran and Twill. We're going into closed session. Okay.
Okay.